Prayer in the Stanford. Lord, good morning. Lord, we just welcome you to our meeting this morning and just thankful for those who are here that have the interest of the county at heart. Those who serve here at the county and those who are vendors for the county and those who cover the county through the local media. We're just grateful for this community we live in. We consider it a blessing, Lord, and we know all good things come from above. Lord, we just want to say, say thank you for all that you do provide us. And Lord, may we never take any of that for granted. May we always maintain a grateful attitude in all things. So, Lord, just again be, be with us as we take up the business and guide us through the process for the best outcome for those that give us the privilege of serving. We just love you. We thank you in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unironed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, guys, we're gonna knock and whittle this out pretty quick this morning so we get to general county business and that may slow us down a little bit. But we've got approval of the minutes and I did have one change, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong. But the, let's see, where I have it. Okay, con drive was discussed for slab. I think it was debris removal.
Correct.
Correct.
Debris removal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's, that's all I had, so if we, if we could, I'd entertain a motion to amend the minutes to reflect that of debris removal and service slab and approve the minutes.
I'd make a motion to amend the minutes to the debris removal of the con slab.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion second to approve the minutes as presented and amended. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. And it's approved. Next thing, we have bid opening for surplus vehicle. I believe this came from the sheriff's department, if I'm not mistaken. Do we have one?
One's all.
Who cares? Three hundred and fifty dollars.
Bid on one chivalry. All right, so wait until Linda gets back and. So, Mark, while we're waiting and since you were the sole bidder, what year vehicle is that? You know?
I wanna say oh six.
Oh six.
Oh four or oh six, I can't remember.
Okay, so we have one bid. I would entertain a motion to approve or reject whatever the motion of the commission would be.
I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the bid as received for that impound.
Okay, I have a bid to accept the, the bid. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we, do I have any further discussion? See, no, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Initial that, and we'll give that to Linda Mark here now, the proud owner of the impound.
Yee-haw.
Oh, I think you're probably.
Well, my grandson's gonna be happy.
Awesome, good.
Yep.
Good. And you know the process, so Mike will pay her.
Should we take plastic in there? Can we do plastic?
I don't think we do plastic anymore. Cash, check. Yeah, I don't, we're not, we're not set up to do, to do plastic.
All right.
So, what I would recommend, just, just see Mike chief. Ready to set along. Okay. All right, next order of business will be CDT applications. So, this is time of year they get mailed out and they start coming in, so we have three applicants. You know, before I do that, I'm going to recognize paid cap representatives here this morning. I forgot to put them on the agenda because they gave me too much notice, too much, too much lead time. So, with that.
Thank you, Randy.
Brian and Mac, you have the floor, and then, and then Jared, after we do that, I think they wanted to probably do a meet and greet and go over some things with you, so, and you guys.
We haven't met each other.
Pardon me?
We haven't met each other.
Okay, all right. So, anyway, Brian, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
I don't have too much. We've got graders coming for the fall. They're on schedule. They'll be here. We'll be getting with Jared doing inspections on your lease returns here pretty soon. And, and all that'll swap out pretty seamlessly, so everything's on time there. Don't really have too much else, no other updates or anything, unless you guys need something from me.
You said those were coming in October, is that correct?
You know, I think it's September and October, something like that. I, I didn't bring my notes in with me, but.
I'll try to remember from way that was set up and stuff, I think, and they were supposed to arrive at you all somewhere in September.
Yeah.
And it starts in October.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have my phone to do return inspection the second week in September, I think, so we're good, man, so.
Oh, when I get, my car, I can shoot you a message and I'll exactly when those come off, please.
Yeah, you bet.
Talked to him a little bit this morning, so kinda got all those introductions out of the way. I'm gonna run back over there when we're done here and look into, do some filters. Looks like you're going through some fuel filters again, so try to figure out where the, why that is, if we got algae in a tank somewhere, if we got water, what we got. But there's, that's your consumption of fuel filters taken upwards, so let me figure out what's causing that. I think thirty-two, is it reporting correctly on Vision Link, it looks like, so I don't know if it's parked or if it's with the disconnect off or if it's just not reporting. But it's been a, a week of, two weeks or a week and a half, I think, since it's repaired, I believe, so I'm gonna figure that one out as well today, get it resolved. Hopefully, it's just, I don't know, do you have any graders parked right now? Are you aware of thirty-two, which one? Have to look, see which one that is, but.
I have to look as well. I don't, I don't believe so. No, they're all up and, all up and running and everything, so it's gotta be some type of.
Forty-nine's throwing some low brake accumulator faults. So, we fought that in the past, and then the transmission went out and didn't get it resolved, but we seem to resolve that. I don't think it's just some old charging accumulator, but we'll try to catch that repaired when we're doing a warranty repair. That way, we can save you some travel and just loop that together. So, but that's what I'm in the middle of right now for you guys, so.
So, would it be possible for you, for you to send me idle time on the machines?
Yeah, we all look and see on the subscription levels kinda depict that the newest machines have the ability to do your real detailed data. The older machines is gonna be, it's based off of machine movement, not off actual ECM data. So, it'll be pretty accurate, but it's not gonna be completely accurate, so just kinda keep that in mind on the older ones. But all the, the last two rounds of machines or the last round of machines?
Should be at least four, five machines.
Okay, so the newest last two rounds of machines will be accurate data that's actually pulled from a computer, so not calculated.
Yeah, if you send out my email address, I would appreciate it.
Definitely do that. And if, well, any of you didn't want to show how to use that program, you will go through that today over there. But I can show you how to use Vision Link and pull that data real time. Now, yours report every night, so it's a day behind the data always is. I can show you how to pull that and simply use, you put an app on your phone, you set up notifications, so we get a machine that starts outside normal hours or has high idle time or has fault codes or whatever, you can get an email or a text or whatever you want, get it sent to you, so.
Like an alert mail or something that says?
Yep. So, if that interests you guys, just let me know, I'll get you set up with it. So, it's, you guys have it, I mean, it's free access. You just gotta create login and do it, so.
I don't, I don't particularly have an interest in it myself, but in addition to Jared having that information, maybe not today, but at some future day you're here. If I could coordinate with the, with Teresa, who is kind of the new Leanna, I would like her to, if she's not already familiar with it.
Yeah.
That way, she's here at least once a week and I can, I can not bother her or Jared's out in field, I can say, hey, can I, can I have this data from the fleet?
Just give her my contact info and what it is. I can swing, I may drive through every day, so I can swing by one day, we can do it, so. It'll take an hour, so. Things all right, yeah.
So, everything good in the Caterpillar world then? Prices declining?
Every day, you know.
Our, our surprises, prices actually did decline this year. We didn't take, we actually took a drop, not an increase, so. But I don't know about machine prices, but parts prices did drop.
We've got no increases. We've not seen any this year, none on the horizon.
Yeah, well, it'll be what, about three years before we have anything on the horizon, so between now and then, who knows what it will be like for us.
Yeah, maybe half price.
Yeah.
I would hope.
All right, do we have any, you guys have anything else? No? Please, we appreciate you taking care of us. Do we have anything for Caterpillar?
Don't believe I do at this time, no secret.
Jared, do you have anything for us before we?
On the emissions, it's coming back out in twenty-six. They're passing some more emission stuff, if I'm correct. So, some of these new graders we're hitting in, is it gonna be this, is it gonna have a change on emissions on it or not?
So, a lot of the stuff you're getting now is already, so up till now, it's been tier four final. So, the next is stage five, is what they call the next, a lot of your stuff's already there. The heavy equipment world's like three years behind the on-highway world, so got a little bit of time before we see major changes. But as of right now, there's, you won't see any differences.
I just.
You've already.
He was talking about these new ones coming in, we're gonna trade out. I didn't know if it was gonna have.
It can't get much cleaner than what it already is. I mean, it's, they're pretty well there, but honestly, kinda we're seeing less. We, we've got rid of EGR now on a lot of the new stuff, so I mean, we're actually seeing less components on the engines. We're doing it all with DEF now, and we're doing it just with dosing. So, the stage five stuff's actually a little better for you guys. It's got less, less trinkets on its brakes, so.
So, then with, with that thought, the issue we're having with filters, we really need to get that resolved because we, we have went through a lot of filters, I understand. And if future repairs are not warranted because of whatever conditions exist, the sooner we get that taken care of, the happier we'll all be. And we'll be saving the county money because I think we ran into that just recently, maybe on a downtime or repair or something, wasn't it, Matt? That we had an issue.
Yeah, ejectors on the, like, we warranted it, but it was.
You did warranty it?
Yeah, we already did warranty, but it was.
Brian, you give it a couple.
Pretty sure it's in the red tank on the, the truck. It's kinda, we just talked briefly over there, but the graders are really the only issue. And everything else, your on-highway trucks aren't fueled out of that.
Right.
They're gonna have the same low micron filter. Now, the ag stuff, the deeter and all that, they don't have quite as fine of a fuel filter, so they'll handle some bigger stuff to go through then. I think that's probably why you're not seeing as big of an issue with that as you are with the cat graders, because they got a, they got a real fine, like, two micron fuel filter on them. So, they'll catch, I mean, anything, we'll plug those up. So, thinking, we, you had algae in that tank about two years ago, and algae's awful, period. I mean, one little piece of it left in there that doesn't die. When you treat it, it'll grow back into probably what you have going now. So, I'm assuming that's, we, we haven't done any fuel tests, so I'm not much sure what it is, but sure looks like it. Looks like that algae, yeah, probably whole thing.
Are we able to send a sample?
Yeah, we can send a sample in, so I'll grab one, I'll roll it, hey, I'll fill a bottle, your bulk trucks are, we'll fill a bottle out of it and I'll send it off. And I'm actually probably gonna fill two bottles of fuel samples, a little bigger, and I don't have one of them with me, but I can dump them into that and I'll get back to the store and send them off.
That one's a couple hundred dollars, isn't it?
Yeah, the fuel samples, hundred, I think, hundred eighty something dollars or something to get it sent off, but I'll get you all that info and we can get it sent off and checked, so. And then we'll see what it says, and if it comes back bad, and probably in sample graders, and figure out which ones. Or just, I mean, you'll kinda know the ones that plug the filters, but need to treat them as well.
I'd say we just need to treat them all, period, if it's coming out of that bulk tank, uh, because they're all getting full from that same one. They don't, why take the chance?
We're actually treating this one and that one.
You fill every grader out of that, I guess, you don't have any of them that just go to, okay, yeah, we're gonna like treat them.
All fueled, right there, from that truck and stuff on.
That's gonna have to be like new fuel filters again because of return fuel.
That's what I'm saying. We're treating it, let's do it and do it right. Because I had the same thing on some of my farm equipment and everything, where I had some of that algae.
Who's your fuel supplier now?
Everything. We've got two different ones and stuff that we use from.
They can treat that for you. That's probably the cheapest way I imagine to do it, would have them treat it.
Right, yeah. And I, and I don't know if they have any biocide or any of that other in there or algae gone that's already involved in any of that. You know, that's one of those things that, you know, a lot of times, especially this time of year, a lot of people aren't treating anything for nothing, but that swashes around. You get that in there and it just happens, so. I thought I'd also heard something on the DEF or something, putting some type of, something happened with the DEF stuff as well.
The main thing with DEF is just keep it out of sun and keep it, you know, in somewhat temperature controlled, what you guys are doing. That, that south door's open, I mean, a little sun gets in there on it, but it's, you can test it. I, I gave Matt a, sent him a picture of a tester, actually, it was like from O'Reilly's, I think, it was like thirty-five dollars. Well worth the money, and just test that DEF periodically, because you guys take, it takes a little while to go through a tote, you know, so messed up. The urea will evaporate out of it, so I mean, you gotta test it, make sure it's like thirty something percent.
And I don't know that much about the DEF stuff, because I, I don't have that new equipment myself.
Only half the field tolls we make to just customers in general are because their DEF's bad, um, DEF-related field tolls, or because their DEF's bad.
So, basically, something like that, then we could probably put up some type of shade, I mean, even if it's piece of cardboard or something to block that one side where that doors.
Throw a tar book.
That tank, yeah, tar or cardboard, anything, just shade that, keep that off there if the sun's what's.
And then you guys were. Everybody fights, if you use fire from the nozzle itself, it was leaking and coming hard on, because DEF is, it's hard on that stuff, it, you know, it chunks up, but anyway. You can't use, you gotta use the plastic stuff, because that DEF, you get brass in there, it interacts, reacts with it, and that'll contaminate your machines as well. So, you can't put like a fuel nozzle on it. Matt was asking about that, and I told him, no, we can't, we don't supply you that stuff, we don't sell that kind of stuff. But you, you gotta stay with that. It's gotta be sure that when you buy a new nozzle, quarter hose, and it says it works with DEF. And that's the reason behind it, because it'll react with other metals, um, and it'll break them down, and then you'll get that, your DEF, that would cause.
And if you roll in there, you are too, because you have.
So, yeah, and I don't know if you're, while you're putting that DEF in to take two machines, but that's also important, to make sure that it's only ever had DEF in it and nothing else. Because the sensors in those tanks are, I don't know, they'll catch up anything there.
As far as I know on that part there, again, I mean, we're still.
I think you're fine, man.
A little new to a lot of this, but. Yeah.
I, we have.
I think they got a tank and a pump.
Yeah, I think you, I, you guys haven't had a lot of DEF issues, um, so other than, we had some, uh, parts updates in the beginning there that, that everybody struggled with that, but we got through that. So, but other than that, I don't think you're having DEF quality issues. I just want to stay on the front side of them, make sure you're not having that, so.
Yeah, we definitely will look forward.
We see a lot of that, so.
Okay, that's why I was asking.
Yep.
Yeah, for some type of, and I'm sure there should be some type of filters on that stuff as well, on the truck and, and their bulk tank or something.
Yeah, the machines have a saw, kinda, so it's, the main thing on it's just the concentration, because it's a thirty-two percent urea and then sixty-eight percent distilled water in there, so that's all it is. But it'll either, the water will, it'll get more water, so sweat condense, get more water, or the urea will evaporate out of it. And so, when you get outside of your range of like thirty to thirty-four percent concentrations, and there's still fault codes in real small window, so.
You bet.
Okay, any, anything else for Matt? Okay. Jared, anything? Okay, we'll cut you guys loose then. I'm sure you can be more productive over there than sitting here listening to us. So, Brian, Mac, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
The support, and, uh, don't, don't be strangers. I guess we'll see you when you bring in the new equipment.
We'll be back. Thanks for the coffee.
Mac, thanks. Brian, thanks.
Good day.
Thanks, bud. Good to see you. Have a good day. See you, Linda.
Bye.
Have a good day.
Next thing I'll do is bounce around here. Randy, did you have anything for the commission this morning?
Two minutes. I have been in direct contact with Conway High School. And Conway High School Superintendent Matt has agreed to upgrade our weather station that is located on Conway High School parking lot. It went down about three weeks ago. And since that is our primary weather station, you know, that we use to watch incoming storms from the west, the decision was made to upgrade it to, to the best one that Davis makes. And the upgrade means that basically it's, uh, we're able to flag that one on barometric pressure. You know, we can put a flag on it that says if it drops two degrees in, in ten minutes, then we're flagged, boom. And also National Weather Service is flagged. So, that is a major plus in forecasting storms that come into La Cleve County. That is the window of the storms that come into Cleve County, about ninety-five percent of them, according to the National Weather Service. And that was the number one selection for that particular unit to protect the county by National Weather Service. So, we're gonna get a new one for that, a better one. And we're probably looking at, it's back ordered now, so we're looking at two to four weeks maybe. Conway has agreed, Conway School District has agreed to purchase it, pay for it. Uh, I just have to line up the installation, and we will do a new MOU with them pertaining to that. La Cleve Electric will be on the MOU. It'll be put a little higher than the other one was. It's all good for us, all great for the county, and there's no cost to the county at this time that I'm aware of. The, everything will be taken care of by Conway. And again, because it's backward, we don't have the finalized cost, but that will go on, you know, we'll put a county tag on it and OEM tag as usual. And, uh, and they have agreed to insure that unit if, if that's okay with us. So, that's the commission's call. The unit's gonna be, I'm gonna say two thousand dollars, more or less, maybe a little more. So, that's all good. You know, they think that we should have, it's called the Pro Two R, is what the unit's called. And it's just a, a much more comprehensive unit, a little more complicated to operate, but I think we can handle it. And, uh, and it does send signals direct to the National Weather Service. Before the signals came to us, then we had to notify National Weather Service. So, this way, National Weather Service has one more piece of equipment that they can help forecast, which, which should help us on our forecast a lot. And the other thing I want to make the commission aware of is that we have lost our goodwill sponsorship and partners. So, you know, we, therefore, we've lost at least twenty-five hours of, of keeping the doors open, you know, that goodwill helped, supported us with, you know, when we're in the field. So, you may see the sign on the door more often because of that, and I don't have an answer for that yet. The way I read the grants, the money is there from Homeland Security and federal housing. But it hasn't been appropriated and hasn't trickled down to all the goodwill groups, and Missouri was one of those. So, if you haven't been notified, Linda, of the goodwill people here in the courthouse, you probably will in the next three or four days. Was it a Doge thing? I don't believe it was, and I think it'll be fixed. I hope it'll be fixed. We went through this about five years ago, and we were down about a month. But we knew we were gonna be down about a month, and on this particular situation, you know, they're not telling us we're gonna be down about a month. So, we just have to hide and wait, but, uh, but it has hurt us as far as the ability to keep the doors open, you know, for the full hours of the courthouse, or close to that. So, I have to, I'm gonna have to rework that a little bit, but we're still, the numbers are on the door, and, you know, they have my direct contact numbers, so we're still gonna be protecting the citizens of La Cleve. I think that's all I have. I'm over two minutes. If I have one minute, probably.
Okay, Randy, thank you for that update. Now, we'll go back to, uh, the agenda. We'll go to CDT applications, and we have three to review here. We have eleven special, Road District One, Conway Special Road District Two, and eleven regional development. So, once you've had a chance to review, review those, probably we'll take, uh, a vote individually on those. Do you have any, like, payroll or anything? And I'm sure you're familiar with the process, so whenever we budgeted, we, uh, put in there sufficient funds for the organizations that can apply for the CDT funds. Linda sends those out usually first of July, and we'll see applications come in from now until probably mid-December or something like that. And so, what we do is, at this time of year, once they're approved, we'll remit half of what has been budgeted, and then the remainder will be distributed in, uh, in December. And then the remainder will be distributed in uh, in December. Okay, so the applications have been reviewed. I would entertain a motion to approve the application for Lebanon Special Road District Number One.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve Lebanon Special Road District Number One.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pose same sign. You want these initial, Linda?
The application.
Where the green is or? Well, I need that where it needs to be.
Just the traffic, yeah.
Where are those separate yet?
Oh, okay. I see the shape.
The paper clip. You know, take the big paper clip off.
All right, next one would be uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the CDT application for Conway Special Road District Number Two. Do you have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the Conway Special Road District Number Two's application.
Second, a motion is second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pose same sign. Request approved. Okay, and the next one I have is um, the application for Brady and Linda, I'm gonna ask you a question because it just come only as I look through this since uh, I'm a voting member here, but I'm a director on Brady. Uh, any conflict of interest if I vote or should I abstain uh, from that? I'm not sure what I've done in the past. I think I've always voted, but once I seen this board of directors report come with it, it caused me to pause and say um, I am a, I mean, it's, it has me listed on here as a director, I think as a commission uh, as the county, as a commissioner, we appoint someone to serve on that board. Okay, all right, so you'll give somebody two votes. Do you need two, two votes? Okay. All right, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the application for uh, Lebanon Regional Economic Development Incorporated.
Yeah, I want you to vote.
You bet. I would make a motion to approve for Lebanon Brady's application.
I'll second it.
Okay, there was a motion in a second. Uh, I will abstain. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Application approved.
I guess he needs to sign off on those three too.
Okay, uh, next order of business will be uh, a uh, personal property tax refund and um, this one came in before I could or after I got the agenda on, I will, it's a request for two years in the amount of one seventy-three twenty-four and the documentation's included, and I would entertain a motion to approve, to approve that.
Sir, that amount is the difference between the diesel and the gasoline?
That's my understanding there.
According to those refund papers that Collector just printed out.
Let's give him some money.
You know, put that in formal to a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion.
I would say in commission to approve.
To give him a hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-four cents for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Refund approved.
Do I need initial on these pages?
No.
Just the long signatures on there?
All right, thank you. All right, next thing we have is the general county business. I'll open the floor up. Okay, don't all jump in here at once, so I will. Uh, so maybe one meeting or two meetings ago, I mentioned that we had received some advance notification that there was an additional uh, opioid settlement that we could participate in. Then there was a second one. Well, this week, uh, I did receive the documentation that would need to be signed off on to enable us to participate in uh, that one. And that one, uh, I believe is the uh, the one that was Purdue and the Sackler family. And so what I'm asking for is approval from the commission to go ahead and execute this so that we can uh, participate in the settlement. So I'm looking for uh, official vote on the county participating.
I don't see any reason why we shouldn't. I mean, I, it's, we can.
But, all right?
Yep.
I would ask you to put that in formal of a motion then.
I would make a motion to go ahead and move forward with the uh, sign off to be enlisted for the opioid.
Okay. I have a motion, second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll get that one executed and then I'll keep an eye out for the second one. And the deadline to submit the paperwork is September thirtieth. Probably can get it out probably today. And then I'll be on the uh, on the lookout for the second one.
Other one will also be at September thirtieth, do you think?
I, I think so, Joe. They, they.
It mattered enough that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's uh, uh, fillable on the internet. After I do that, then I'll, then I'll print a copy, okay? All right, um, still my turn. You guys got it?
Yeah.
Uh, and then this would just be some informational items. I think we all received a, an invitation from Senator Hawley to attend the Ag Advisory Council meeting at the state fair. Uh, if there's interest in more than one, we probably need to get it posted that we'll be there. Um, the commission has went the last couple of years and, and it's uh, it's uh, relatively informative with uh, agriculture policy that's taking place in uh, in DC. And it's also uh, been the tradition that the Eastern Commissioner would buy ice cream at Mr. Edge or whatever it's called over there and the Western Commissioner would drive. I mean, I'm just saying that.
That is Mr. Edge. I know how to get there.
Historically, that's, that's what is taking place.
That's what I've got wrote down here, State Fair, Ag Day.
We just need to give them a heads up if we're gonna, if we're gonna be there or not, so.
Okay, I can tell you now that, that's, I'm not going to be there.
You're running the diatribe.
So, I will send you with twenty bucks.
Every stop on the way, ain't no way back.
You bet.
I'm gonna be batching it that week and that will not, that will not.
So Joe, just prior to uh, yeah, the notification August eighth, uh, let, let me know and I'm, I'm somewhat in and like.
And that's where I'm at right now.
I'm not necessarily, I'm not necessarily in all the way, but.
And that's kinda where I, I would have tentatively put it down on my calendar here, uh, but I'll know by next meeting for sure.
But it is a good, a good event.
Yeah.
And uh, okay, uh, let's see. Then I had, um, I met with uh, NU Extension Council uh, last week, and this is in reference to our uh, our Ag Farm Tour. And due to recent changes and budget cuts within NU, we're going to postpone our Ag Tour for this fall. Uh, we'll see if anything changes, but right now we hit the, hit the pause button. Uh, it's uh, a function of the responsibilities that MU staff uh, has, the workload that they have to do and how that has to be prioritized. And then with budget cuts and some staff, even here locally, uh, possibly with the SNAP program. Uh, it, it's um, it's just a reflection of, of the, the economics of, of maintaining the staff to be able to fully support this program and to do it uh, well, like it has been. We've had two really good Actors, been well attended, a lot of participation from NU. If you were out there last year by any chance at all, uh, or even the year before, there was a lot of MU staff there, various programs they offer. It's just unfortunate right now, a lot of those are, it's just uncertain, okay? So we will not have the Ag Tour as we know it at this, this time. We were presented an opportunity to participate in what's called the Show Me Youth Startup Challenge. It's something we, we can review uh, at some point. And then they have a uh, connecting entrepreneurial communities. Uh, but within our original scope and vision for the Ag Tour, I'm not sure even one of these fit at this time. Uh, what this commission has, has desired to see a focus on Leclae County's ag economy with a strong youth component. And so I would like to suggest that we keep those parameters there. And uh, this would kinda, kinda deviate from that being a much broader sense. And um, so I would ask if you want to, we could participate in those, but it really doesn't fit the scope of what I believe our Ag Tour was designed to be. Okay, any, any thoughts? Would just hit the pause button and?
Yeah, I'd say just hold off on that. I think we got, like you said, the structure and stuff that we had laid forth earlier. So I think we just stay with where we're at from now on, unless something else comes out and comes back up again.
Okay, next thing that we had to discuss in previous meetings and then just came up uh, this week with Roden Bridge was to draft a driveway culvert installation. I'm just gonna pass these out from review. I pulled down three examples from three other counties. Uh, I'd like to just give each of you one of those, uh, look at them, uh, bring them back next week or lay them on my desk with your thoughts. Um, and uh, see if we can't get something put out there. I think one of the questions that came up, all of these were, uh, it has to be metal culverts. Has to meet certain standards. I know that question has come up in the past. Um, so please review that. And, and maybe we can take the three and make one, make, make it our own.
Correct.
And uh, if I had that, say by next meeting and then we, we can approve that, then I can have Teresa uh, do the changes to make it ours. And that's after I mentioned the, was it Adobe? What was the software that, that was one of the reasons why that we wanted this? So we could, we could manipulate these around. So maybe Teresa could use a machine. I don't know, Linda. I really don't, so don't know how that works. It just crossed my mind. Google search.
Okay.
Hey, it's, it's, they're not AI generated, but maybe we could. All right, so uh, here's uh, any, any general county business?
Leave so on that board. Good for them.
Okay, seeing none. Public comments, items listed on the agenda.
What were the amounts for the approved CDT applications?
Lebanon Special One, the first, the request was for fifty-five thousand. We approved that. We distribute half of that in July. The other for Conway Special Two, I believe, was twenty-seven five and it was approved. And then Brady was approved for ten thousand and again, we distributed half of those funds in, in July.
Gotcha.
Sorry, didn't mention the amounts. Okay, we'll jump down to routine business then. I get here. You guys seen the, oh yeah, council table.
Yeah, then I don't know how that forms out. It was just one of those thoughts that popped in my mind as to how we were running twenty years there.
Okay, public comments, items not listed on the agenda. Seeing none, okay. Any other business to come before the camp?
I did have a question. So I had one of the other county commissioners that reach out over Dallas County. They was inquiring about our radio systems and stuff that we use, the county radio systems. And they was asking if it was the same people that we used with the sirens and the stuff down at Bennett or if it was somebody, somebody different.
So Joe, we had purchased, I believe Motorola radios and I don't believe those came from those vendors that did the siren work.
I didn't think so either.
No. In fact, Matt had reached out and I'm on the hunt for some, some coax and NMO mounts for him so he can get a couple of those installed. I don't know how much we use those radios. It's probably three or four years ago, we, we bought, I don't know, maybe seven or eight. Two of them never got installed anywhere. They were brand new. I know they've been visiting with a brush cutter is, doesn't ever seem to, to work. So I, I would like to see them work, okay? But I don't know what kind of issues we've had, but listening to the scanner, I never hear any Roden Bridge traffic on our radios. Point being, maybe they all use their cell phones if they need to, okay? And we probably should do our best to get the system to work, but at some point, is it, is it effective based upon a repeater's installation, thing, things like that? Long answer to your question, but it wasn't, it wasn't the vendors that used the sirens.
Right. Yeah, I didn't think that it was and that's what I told them that I wouldn't. Just want to be a confirmation and see.
Yeah.
Or is anything else there? Is it just Motorola's and?
Yeah.
Well, there. You bet.
Okay, I will do that.
I did ask Teresa if, I probably want to hand this off to Jared, but I did ask her, give me a report on roads that hadn't been graded this year because I, I'd received a, didn't receive a call, actually seen somebody and, and their road hadn't been graded all year. So I do have a report of roads that haven't been graded this year. There's not a lot of them. Maybe if you throw out the cemetery roads, maybe about thirty or so. That's probably not that unusual. And then I also report comparing last year to this year and it really looks pretty good because we're a little, little over halfway through the year and a lot of them look like they're tracking on the amount of ratings that they've had. And that's just things that I, that I look at and those reports can be generated relatively easy. So that's, that's all I've got. Anything else to?
Say you can.
Yeah, so what, that, that was dropped by and I was asked to give you and Eric that invitation. It's an event that a private citizen's having and it's for some type of nonprofit. You know, I, I didn't look at it that close. I just told that individual I, I'd make sure you guys got it.
You bet. Yeah, I kind of looked at, I had something on my desk about that. It was the same thing, so. Like you said, didn't look at that part and just kind of looked it over.
Yeah, just the personal invitation on, an invitation from a commission standpoint. Just personal and.
Individual.
I later didn't hear something, forget it.
You bet.
Yes, sir.
Any road issues?
Always.
Always? Oh, Joe, we have them off there. Did we get Wedgewood opened up? Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, seemed to be, Jared seemed to be getting on the situations and the calls and stuff that come in and we've been trying to transition him into a few of them here and there. I'm still taking a few. I had, I got a call on Saturday, I guess it was, from dispatch, tree down on Wilmington and thirty-two. It was south, so that ended up being special. I'm going.
North.
Where it was. Or north, yeah, north. It wasn't north, which is south, so it was there. So, but I went over there to check it for sure and called Jared to see if he got the phone call. They called me first. Of course, I'd answered yet and had that, so maybe time that we turn that phone number back into the number one.
I went down there about two weeks ago and I made sure that the sequence was road and bridge first and then east and west. If they knew that and call me if the building's on fire.
You bet.
If it was a road issue, you know, I fear the time they, they got to me, then it was probably already too late, then.
Right. Right. So, and that's why I'm saying that I think this was a new, new dispatcher by the way she talked and stuff, because she didn't understand the north and south part of that as well. Remember I asked her because of the dividing line there. But I did go ahead and reach out. I called special, called Shane and I stayed out to direct the traffic until I had it cleared up. Jared ended up showing up as well. He just assisted as well in the traffic. So Saturday afternoon, so Big Tree just split, failed. So I wrecked her mental chapel. Other than that, you know, hot and dry. Water truck on one of those hills is such a long have to do to get rid of some of those washboards that come up. Cut them out and roll them over.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. Jared?
Second.